Good evening. Welcome to the November 18th Board of Education meeting. I'd like to ask our superintendent, Cheryl Pettis, to lead us in the plat of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we don't have any changes in the meeting agenda. Public participation, first public participation. Do we have anyone who would like to speak? No? Okay. Moving on to the minutes, the minutes for October 14th and October 29th.
No move.
Mr. Connors, do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gish, all in favor? Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes. For the reports, student report, Jesse P. Hor.
There you go. Good evening. So, the most recent news that I have to report on is that student government hosted a town hall with Mr. Bernhardt last week. So, town hall is one of the most well-attended events we have where students are able to be heard, ask questions, and hear information firsthand from Mr. Bernhardt. The meeting was also recorded and posted on Google Classroom so all Ward Melville students can see it. There were several questions that were addressed around COVID and shutting down that is hopefully seen as students not wanting to have long-term shutdowns, and we appreciate being in person. But, I mean, an occasional snow day is always welcome.
Those two are facts.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. So, another concern was around cheating on exams while remote. So, Mr. Bernhardt addresses the protocols and expectations as it relates to cheating, but I do want to bring up one concern here because it potentially disadvantages our districts versus other districts that are partial or fully remote. So, we firsthand, we first, geez, we first, we hear firsthand of students laying out notes or using other tools as they test. This cheating can inflate their grades or, in another way, make us less competitive. Please keep in mind and advocate for us with colleges and even scholarship opportunities. If you see irregularities in data or how we do or grade inflation, it is my hope that colleges are informed when a student is in person. Maybe it's like adding things to student files, school profiles, conversations with college reps, or maybe even mention it in letter of recommendations. So, in the spirit of Thanksgiving, the students are all grateful to have in-person attendance, and I wanted to highlight some innovative ways the extracurriculars are still operating. So, NHS and Key Club are doing a food collection with safety protocols for donations. NHS is also doing a big community service weekend this upcoming weekend. Members from the club have all made groups and are doing different community service projects throughout the community. Food trucks were a success the second time around during the Mental Health Day at Ward Melville. Mr. Finney gave us, gave some hope back to athletes that are committed to playing at colleges and announced the signing milestone that will be taking place by booking appointments. And concerts are being redesigned to be done online, and while it isn't the full house the students and community are used to, it is an example of the innovation because the show must go on. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
So, thank you, as always, for your excellent report. Just one thing that I would like to say, and you'll probably be hearing this tonight and multiple times, is just to whatever extent possible in your role as a student leader, if you could try to communicate the importance of students observing social distancing protocols when they're not in school. Because we've found that, we've found that the school buildings are safe, but people are becoming infected when they're outside of school. So, you know, we want to keep schools open, and the students do too. So, we just all have to pull in together to really, to try to keep it safe.
Definitely.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. For our next report, we have the Industry Advisory Board, Mr. Michael Ardalino. Thank you.
Thank you very much for inviting us here tonight, and I didn't get a chance to say hello to each person on the board. I know most of you, a few of you I didn't get to say hello to. I want to thank you for allowing us to be here. I'm going to be very brief. I just would like to introduce a few people, and then I'm going to turn it over to Eileen. We have three executive board members that are here I'd like to just introduce. If Collette Freibitz would please stand, she's the, one of the owners of PPS Advisors. She's on our executive board. I'd like to introduce Nancy Bezetta. She is one of the owners of Competition Automotive Group. And I will just, as courtesy, say that Kara Hahn wanted to be here tonight, but she's not able to be here, and she may be able to come in. So, if she does come in, you all can recognize her. She's also on our executive board. At this point, I just want to say this. Many years ago when we started this advisory board, it did very, very well, and it was growing very, very well. However, for certain reasons, it needed to stop at that time. About two and a half years ago, when they approached us again to do it, it's doing phenomenal, and it's only two years, and we're really excited that you guys have asked us to come and present what we've accomplished so far. So, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Eileen.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, everyone. I'm Eileen Littman. I'm a business teacher at the high school. I'm also the coordinator for the work-based learning program, Career Jump Start, and the Three Village Industry Advisory Board. Our mission, can you hear, thank you. Our mission is to build partnerships to bridge the skills gap between school and 21st century employers. And we're doing, as Michael said, to piggyback on what he said, an absolutely phenomenal job at that. We just established, reestablished, two years ago, and there were a couple of industry advisory boards that surfaced over the years, and this is about the third time around. So, just to, you know, continue the work that was done in the past, we are now in existence. A couple of years ago, Cheryl had given us the green light to go ahead and meet with Smithtown's Industry Advisory Board. And in doing so, we learned how they established the board that they have, which is 42 years strong. I spoke with them, took in what they had to say, and then made it my own. And we have recruited such a phenomenal executive board, as well as general board members to this point, and we also have three of our fantastic student liaisons here. We have a crew of about 10 student liaisons. Richard Cryjak is a senior. Richard, if you would stand, thank you. Sarah Kahn, junior, and Grace Schreck is also a junior. And the work they do is just phenomenal. So, I will continue now with the presentation. So, this is the executive board. We have some members that aren't here this evening. You also have packets in front of you so you can peruse at your leisure to see exactly who is leading at this point in time. Again, the student liaisons, and these are just a couple of pictures of them, some from last year, and a current one from this year, including the members that are present with us tonight. Okay. So, what have we been doing over the past two years? We relaunched in October of 2018, and I am so proud to report the amazing accomplishments that we have made to date. The first thing that we handle is the work-based learning program for Career Jump Start, the Career Jump Start course. For those of you who aren't familiar with it, it's a half-year course, and a student can get anywhere from a half-credit to two-and-a-half credits for the class. The reason they can get additional credit beyond a half-credit is for their workplace experience out in the field, and that's part of what the advisory board is doing, establishing relationships out in the field for those students to actually acquire those experiences through career prep, job shadowing, and internships. The second thing that we have put in place, which has really been absolutely fantastic, is our annual career fair for grades seven through 12. When I took this position on, I really, you know, took it to heart, and I didn't want to just create a career fair, a run-of-the-mill career fair, because in every single one of my classes, I always survey the students just to find out what their career paths may be, what they're considering at this point in time. And too often, I hear, "I have no clue." And for those who even think they may know what they want to do at this point while they're in high school, their response usually looks something like this. Hmm, yeah, I'm not sure. So, in developing a career fair, I didn't want it to be an event where students just go attend and walk around aimlessly if they really had no idea what they wanted to be. It's an overwhelming experience for someone who has nowhere to start. So, what we had did was take an innovative approach to it, and I'll get to that a little later on in another slide, but that's what has really made our career fairs so successful. The other program that we have in place is called Money Talks, and it's a financial literacy program that happens in the spring, and we have investment professionals come in from our Industry Advisory Board, and they present workshops, well, under non-COVID conditions. They present workshops in the LGI, which is the large group instruction room in the high school, and they'd spend the day there. And students would file in, all the economics classes were invited, and they would participate, and then if we had excess room, students were able to sign up for it, and we had great attendance for that, too. And the last thing that we're doing at this point in time is called the Career Classroom to Career Series. And that's a program in which we're actually creating authentic experiences in the classroom in which businesses are coming in, presenting a problem, and the students are forming teams and coming up with solutions and presenting their ideas. And then the businesses are using those results in their own businesses. So, Career Jump Start is currently with an enrollment of 38 kids, and it's capped at that due to COVID protocols. Job shadowing and internship placements will be about 35-plus this year, and the students who are getting additional credit for their graduation, for graduation from their work experience is about five kids. So, they will graduate with more credits than needed. And we have about 32 participating employers at this point in time. These are just some of the logos of the businesses that we have locally. So, two years ago, I included this slide in our launch presentation, and it's crazy to think, but it's true. Here we are. It's 2020, and in 2020, we literally have five generations working side by side. And with COVID in place and just, you know, technology and the world moving as fast as it is these days, we really need to stay on top of preparing our students for the real world, for a global economy, a global society, and for the experiences that we never had. When they're going on job interviews at this point in time, their first meeting is not face-to-face. It's a phone call or a Zoom call, and if they don't cut the mustard, they're never being seen in person. So, they have a whole different world and which is different from the other generations across the spectrum. Okay. So, our annual career fair, I mentioned earlier that we took a customized approach to this. And what I had decided to do, because in Career Jump Start, the students literally begin the course with learning who they are and what their career DNA is. Career DNA meaning their dynamic natural abilities, what they're good at, what they enjoy, what they're passionate about. And from there, they would discover what careers or occupations would be most suitable for them. We also did some research for last year's career fair, and you could see in the slide, the growth careers on Long Island. We found out, in order to keep our talent here on Long Island and stop them from leaving and not being able to sustain a job or a profession here in our local area, we did the research to find out what's here on Long Island, what can keep them here, or what can bring them back if they choose to go to school somewhere else. And we targeted the healthcare industry, business, IT, and the hands-on careers, which are the trades. And the career fair was based on that. These are just some pictures. We have over 40 businesses that participated in this, 500-plus attendees. This is not just a program for the high school. This is seven through 12, so the junior highs are participating as well. The next program that we have established is called Money Talks, and again, the students are learning from the experts. We have our professionals from the Industry Advisory Board in the finance industry who come in and, again, spend the day and present for the students in the LGI. And these are just a couple of pictures from that event. The last program is Classroom to Careers Project Series, and I explained it briefly before, but the business students are provided an actual problem case study from local businesses. Then we break up into groups in the classroom. They collaborate on solutions. Solutions are presented to local businesses, and the students receive relevant feedback. And in the end, the top idea or presentation wins a prize, and ideas are implemented in the real world. It doesn't get more authentic than that. Okay? And obviously, this year, we're going to have to make some changes, and all of our meetings will be virtual. Okay. So, our goals for this school year, social distancing, Google meets, creates new virtual programs across the board for everything that we are doing. Virtual meetings, you know what those look like. And the goals for the 2021 school year, fulfill the job shadowing and co-op work experience and internship opportunities for our Ward Melville students. We're going to put on a multi-industry career fair, career exploration program. There will be some segments that will be live, and then what we also plan on doing, which I think is a fabulous idea, and it can really be widespread and reach more students than ever, is create some videos that will be a virtual library of careers, and students can peruse them at their leisure. So, they can learn about multiple careers at any given time, and it will go up on our Industry Advisory Board website. The next plan is for the virtual financial literacy workshops, Money Talks, and again, that will be a virtual program and same as Classroom to Careers. So, we're really excited at this point in time. We have the virtual career fair plans in progress. It's going to be in January before the students prepare for scheduling for the following year to make it relevant and get them exposed to possible classes that correlate to the careers that they're considering. So, again, a lot of thought goes into this. We make it the most meaningful experience. And to close, I just want to add something. So, two years ago, we had gone to Smithtown's Industry Advisory Board to get some feedback. And last year, they came and sat in on one of our meetings, and they were highly impressed with what we are doing. They actually asked us to, you know, give them some of our ideas that they can implement, too. And I am most proud to say that just the other day, I got an email from Smithtown. They heard that we're doing a virtual career fair because I run in work-based learning circles, and I was on a Zoom call and talking about it, and they are coming to us. An industry board of 42 years strong is coming to us for guidance to run a virtual career fair for themselves. So, I think it's just a fantastic accomplishment that we have made in just a short two years. We're very innovative, and, you know, the programs are essential to keep our students as marketable as possible in a very competitive global economy. These are our student liaisons. I'm just going to, are there speakers connected to this? I guess, okay. These are, these-
Tell them what it is. Tell them what you-
Yeah. These are videos. The students wanted to contribute to this presentation. They really had some fantastic words. They were not guided in the least bit on what to say. All they were told was, "Tell what, how the IAB has impacted you as a student liaison." And the things that they said were just so impressive.
It's not a touch. Try English for us.
I'm sorry?
It's not a touch. Try English.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm on a Chromebook too often. Sorry, guys. I'm touching the screen. All right. I'll play one for you.
These are in college.
Yeah. It's, you can't hear it.
Yeah, it can hear it. Tell them what you said.
Yeah. I don't think there's enough volume to actually hear it.
That works with local businesses around the island and also with the-
That's all the way up. That's it, right?
Yeah.
I'll have to minimize it to try to-
Yeah. Well, anyhow, there are, I will. I absolutely will. Because just their words, just how they expressed what they got out of being on the Industry Advisory Board, the kudos that they gave to our business people, I have to say, we are extremely fortunate to have such a dedicated executive board of business community members that have put our children first and have created such fantastic programs for them.
I just want to make a-
I am honored to work with them.
I want to make a comment for you, because you guys can't hear this and the other executive board, because we've actually talked about these. The person you see at the top, that person that's there, came in, he was very shy, he was kind of quiet, and the way we conducted the meeting, he is so powerful, so strong, so confident, and I wanted to say it to him, tremendous difference. I wish you could hear what he said, and we're very proud of you that we could be part of it with you. And that's the thing that makes it all worth it. And I could go on and on about the other two as well. We get as much out of it as they do, and I didn't want to interrupt you, but I know how wonderful these people changed and grew, and it makes us feel as business people. The big thing that I heard all the time when we were talking, when we were doing this in the beginning, all of us, and I'm speaking for all of you, because we all talk about this all the time, keeping the children to understand the amount of educated children we have on Long Island, and to be partnering with Smithtown, if the 42 years of doing this, and they're listening to our ideas along with the students, is amazing. The way that is impacting, we're going to have our students really realize, maybe they don't want to go away. Maybe they want to be right here. Maybe they want to go to school right here. Maybe they want to come back here and his businesses. I don't want to speak to the others here, but we need them as much as they need us. And this, by you allowing us to do this, it's working, and it's working phenomenal. And I just said it for a lot of what I know you guys want to say, but we're trying not to eat up too much time.
Would the students like to speak?
Oh, if they would, I'd love it. Thank you. I'm sorry.
My name is Richard Cryjak, and I'm a student liaison on the board. I just want to say some words that I said in the video, but you guys can't hear it. So, I've been on the board since we started back up in October of 2018. It's been a wild ride, just, it's been so nice being able to work with all these great businesses from around the island and just create great things for all the students, such as the Career Fair and the Money Talks event. Just being able to put in my input and hear everybody else's input and be able to create the best thing for the students has been wonderful to see how they react and get great things out of it. So, it's been awesome.
Thank you a lot, Ms. Littman.
My pleasure. We are so happy to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that wraps up our presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I've, from what I've heard, Smithtown is to business competitions what we are to, like, science Olympiad and that kind of stuff, that they have a long tradition of winning those. And what I'm hearing is that our, the reputation of our program is rapidly rising, and it doesn't surprise me with the excellence of the type of people that are involved in it. But, I mean, I'm just hearing amazing things about what you guys are doing, so thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. Yes, Smithtown runs something called Business Olympics. It's in-house. It's a district thing. It's not outside the district. But their advisory board are the judges for the students for that particular program.
Blue Ocean.
Oh, and Blue Ocean. Another innovative program is Blue Ocean, the Blue Ocean Entrepreneurship Competition. And that's another area in which I'm honored. Last year, they know how involved I am with the students. They know my passion and desire for our kids to succeed, and they had nominated me to be on their international board for this competition. So, I am now on their board, and I involve as many students as I can from my business program, DECA program, as well as the Industry Advisory Board. And it's another absolutely phenomenal experience for these kids to be able to pitch and compete with kids around the globe. So, just, and actually, for the past two years, we've won $1,000 for having the most entries into the competition. So, yeah, the business program has accomplished that.
Great. Does anybody have any questions? No? I want to thank the board, Industry Board, and all your dedication to the students and all the time that you have given, and thank you, the students, and excellent job.
Thank you very much.
Items for board action. D, authorization of destruction of cast ballots for the MS Clark Memorial Library budget vote. That's for 2019, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Have a motion, please?
No motion.
Ms. Gish, Mr. Vizel, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Approval of contract with outside service providers for special education tutoring services?
Mr. Connors, if you'd like, you could do EF and G all together. They're all similar, all special ed contracts.
Okay. So, EF and G, approval, an addendum of contract with outside service providers for special education services, and G. Mr. Connors?
Second.
Ms. Gish, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Acceptance of donations?
We have a number of donations. The first is a check in the amount of $1,625 donated by the Sotoca PTA for cultural arts programs. And then we have four separate donations, all from the Three Village STEM and Richmond Foundation totaling $2,500 for science Olympiads at Murphy, Jolinas, and Ward Melville, and also $1,000 to the Ward Melville Robotics Team. A check for $500 for the Jody F. Scholarship Fund in the name of Janet Von Bargen, who is a retired teacher. A check for $63.48 donated by Ohio Pile Prints for the Ward Melville High School Beautification Fund, and $800 from the Stony Brook Community Church to be used to purchase gift cards for families in the district selected by school social workers for the annual Angel Tree Holiday Wish List Project.
Wow. That's a lot. Thank you. Have a motion, please? Ms. Gish? Mr. Vizel? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Declaration of surplus equipment?
We have a couple of things, a couple of vacuum cleaners, and then a list of technology equipment that is all unusable.
Okay. Have a motion? Ms. Gish, Mr. Horn Rice, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Declaration of surplus textbooks?
We have a number of textbooks from Nastook Elementary School, all related to programs that we no longer have.
Okay. Mr. Vizel? Ms. Gish? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Approval of administrative intern Arrowhead Elementary School?
Yes, this is a resolution we typically put to the board for their approval whenever we have an internship experience here in Three Village.
Mr. Connors? Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Resolution recalling SS T-shirt teachers?
Yes, this is a resolution recalling one of our English teachers as our staffing needs are changing.
Have a motion? Mr. Vizel? Ms. Gish? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Resolution recalling excess special education aids?
And this is the same. We've accessed a bunch of employees, special ed aides were included, and we've had an opportunity to recall them, some as well.
Have a motion? Ms. Gish? Mr. Vizel? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Personal action, education law examination of employee's name in confidential Schedule A.
So, this is a resolution approving in 9/13 with regard to the employees that we discussed in exec session.
Dr. Kerman? Mr. Connors? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Personnel action, education law 9/13 examination of plain names in confidential Schedule C.
And this is the same, but a different name.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Kerman? Mr. Connors? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Approval of agreements between the Three Village Central School District and the Three Village Teachers Association and the employees named in the attached confidential Schedule B.
And this was as a result of bringing in another additional, what we call COVID-type teacher on board to assist with our- on board to assist with our phys ed program.
Thank you. Dr. Durski? Dr. Kerman? Mr. Connors? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Personnel matters? One instructional? Some of them? Okay, Mr. Cornrice? Ms. Gish? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Non-instructional? Mr. Viso? Ms. Gish? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Our recommendation of- What? Sorry. Recommendations of committee of special education subcommittee and accommodations. 504 planned for the date stated? Mr. Cornrice? Mrs. Gish? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. And recommendations of committee for preschool, special education for the date stated? Okay? Mr. Cornrice? Ms. Gish? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Any other informational items of interest?
I, is this on? Okay. I, I just want to take an opportunity to thank Eileen Littman and Mike Ardellino for an outstanding presentation. Several years ago, we had almost decimated our entire business program in Three Village. And to see where it is today, despite the challenges of COVID and, and other issues that we've had, is just remarkable. So, kudos to our Indust- Industry Board and all who have made such a commitment, and our students. I just want to say thank you. It is, it is really very, it's exceptional what you've done, and we hope that that momentum continues. So, thank you.
Public participation? Does anybody wish to speak? The second public participation? No? Like a motion to adjourn? Hey? Dr. Kerman? Mr. Connors? Happy Thanksgiving and have a wonderful evening.